Upon a request from our last meeting, these microphones are actually just geared for the recording and the live feed to our channel, James Island Public Service District, that appears on YouTube. So that's why whenever you're talking in them...
Then it doesn't sound like you can hear anybody.
So I brought my speaker from my house, and that's the way we're going to do it tonight. So that way, everybody can hear and be present in the moment. Now if you will, I am calling to order this March 25th at 7:00 PM, the James Island Public Service District Commission Monthly Meeting. Please stand for our pledge and prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here safely. And during the season of Easter and Passover, we want to be mindful of all the wonderful gifts in our life, and thankful for everything that goes unnoticed every day. I would also like to just have a moment of silence for any and all military and first responders who have lost their lives or have had their health compromised trying to help Thank you. Please be with their families, and always be mindful to try to help somebody else. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So this will be where the...we're going to go through a couple of other exercises. So when you are wanting to come up to speak, you can use the microphone, and it does have an on/off, so don't get nervous. Turn it on.
Turn it off. We'll be good. But lucky for you, I've got a big mouth, so I'll be over here. Freedom of Information Act, please.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of this meeting and its agenda were provided to all news media and persons requesting this information.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouse?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Here.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Grant?
Here.
Commissioner Latson? Commissioner Milliken? Commissioner Woolsey?
We are now on to the oral and written petitions. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and if you have not signed in, there will also be a sign-in period at the end of the meeting, so you can speak at the beginning and at the end, however you wish to do. And she is going to...Ms. Joanne Tucker is going to read to you a little preamble about the public comments and how they go. Thank you.
Purpose of public comment. Public comment is for the purpose of permitting the public to address the commission, not to debate or berate the commission or its employees. No person, including the commissioners, and any person having the floor, shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the commission during this period. No questions shall be asked of a commissioner or staff person for the purpose of eliciting a response during this portion of the meeting. All matters will be recorded, and the commission will determine if the citizens shall receive a direct response at a later time.
And you've got the sign-in sheet, ma'am?
I do.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is...oh, turn it on. Is that better?
Much better.
Can you hear me?
I think so.
Is that good? I can just talk really loud.
Okay.
My name is Brooke Lyon. I live at 669 Port Circle on James Island, and I think all of y'all know I'm the mayor of the town of James Island. I see that you have the Dills Bluff property on your agenda tonight, and I am just here to let y'all know that the town would absolutely love to buy that property back, since it belonged to the first town, if it turns out that we can do that. And I just wanted to petition y'all to consider that if things change. I understand y'all have it under contract, but we would definitely love to get that back for the town and make a park or green space, whatever we can do to get it back for our citizens. It was bought with taxpayer money back in the 90s with Joan Sui, our first mayor, and just want y'all to know that again. Thank you so much.
That's fine.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I cut it off so you wouldn't get feedback.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
No.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? I can hear myself. Okay. I'm Dick Clark. No, I'm James Looby. I live at 1330 White House Boulevard in White House Plantation. I am here to support the withdrawal of the town of James Island from the contract with KT Properties concerning the purchase of 6.52 acres, also known as the Marsh Walk, and sell the land back to the town of James Island. I am not the only one opposed to this transaction. Volunteers circulated...
A little bit close to you, ma'am.
I am not the only one opposed to this transaction. Volunteers circulated two petitions, and together we have a total of 1,400 signatures. The signers wanted to keep the petition property...I'm sorry. The signers wanted to keep the property as is, or save as green space for a children's playground, and/or a casual walk-through path, being careful not to disturb the existing So ladies and gentlemen, please do what the voters, citizens, and your neighbors want. Support the withdrawal.
I'm going to wait to speak at a second. If that's fine.
Cody Putin?
Potvin.
Close.
My handwriting's chicken scratch.
Madam Chair, could we have addresses for these folks?
Yeah. I'm from 1273 Hampshire Road. My name is Cody Potvin. I don't think I need the thing. I can speak fairly loud. I didn't know that the mayor was actually looking to purchase property from you guys. I think it gives a perfect out for the commission to kind of move away from what's been a very long and drawn-out process for y'all. I can imagine this is kind of getting to that point where you're like, "Let's be done with it." And I fully support her idea of having you guys sell it back to the town, provided it was given to y'all back in the 90s, whatever you said. And I understand that you guys need to sell it. You need to make some sort of money off of it. There's lots of things that y'all can do to provide better services. I know you have the fire department under y'all. I remember there was one meeting a couple of months back where they were looking to get new equipment that they need to get their jobs done, which I appreciate. I have a friend, a good friend, who's a West Ashley firefighter, so I can understand needing that necessary equipment so you can actually go into a home that is on fire, go into a apartment building that's on fire. But I'm one of those many people that the speaker before me just mentioned, that would support it being a green space, giving it to the town so they can decide what they want to do with it. It kind of gives you guys that out where now you have some funding. Maybe it's not the maximum amount that you would get from selling it to a developer, but selling it to a developer is going to end up with whatever plan he has. So he had mixed residential, maybe a restaurant. He didn't really have an idea of what shops would be put in there. We didn't like that. Obviously, he couldn't get the zoning through. And now his new idea is to build a storage facility, which I don't think that reflects the character of James Island. Do we need another storage facility? That's a rhetorical question. If you give it back to the town, it presents the opportunity for this space to be used to reflect the character of James Island. So I implore you to cease the contract and then move into negotiations to selling it to the town, because I think it's going to be better for everybody. It's going to be better for all of our neighbors. It's going to be better for the town. And I think about all of the people that would be able to enjoy it, all of the generations that will continue to be able to enjoy it. If we sell it to this developer, or if y'all sell it to this developer, it's going to become what it is, and that's never going to become green space ever again. It's going to end the possibility of it ever becoming anything better than a vacant parking lot at some point. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh, let's see. Hi, my name is Melissa Looby. My husband, James Looby, and I live at 1330 White House Boulevard. And in light of the flooding that we had two weeks ago in our neighborhood in White House Plantation, I thought I'd talk about trees again tonight. The flooding was so bad two weeks ago that the intersections of Mount Vernon and Hampshire and Mount Vernon and Francis...is it Francis Marion? No. Valley Forge, I'm sorry. Valley Forge and Mount Vernon were underwater, underwater. And actually, the next day, I was walking my dogs, and we saw a fish, a big fish, in a ditch on Mount Vernon, which I assume came out of the creek, which was over its boundaries in the flooding. So, and we have, you know, I think, mentioned several times as we've talked to you about this development, that it would greatly increase flooding in our neighborhood. The...and of course, you know, all the trees are going to be cut down. They absorb a lot of water, and it's going to make flooding worse to develop that land. Also, I want to remind you about the trees that as they...if they do make the development around the trees, that it's going to be very harmful to the trees, because trees have two kinds of roots. They have the one that anchors them, and then they have the surface roots. And when you have...the surface roots absorb nutrients and moisture. So when you have construction vehicles going over those surface roots, it's going to greatly damage those trees and possibly kill some of them. It's...so I just want to say to please to preserve both the health and the beauty of James Island, please don't sell this land to be developed. Instead, please sell it to the town, and they will create a public use that's beneficial for everyone. Okay? Thank you.
Sandrine, I can't pronounce her last name.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Sandrine Compor. I live in 1267 Hampshire Road, just behind the proposal of the marsh, the six acres. The developer, when he presented the project, mentioned that he did community meetings. I would like to see where these community meetings led to a storage building, because I don't know anybody in James Island that say we need more storage buildings. So I have a big issue in reconciling the good of the community and the storage building. The residential part, it's an improvement compared to the first plan, which was a townhouse. Now it's single-family. That's much better, and that's thanks to the town and the planning commission that refused the townhouse. So that's much better. Even still, there is some issues, flooding. As one of my neighbors mentioned, my ditch is still full from two weeks ago, totally full. So we have a lot of issue in flooding. So a storage building will just increase crime, create zero job, zero. There is no job in a storage building. Attract burglars, and amplify drainage and flooding. So do we really want in our good conscience say that's the best we can do? I understand GIPD needs money, everybody needs money, and the service, and the firefighter, and the public service, they need better truck, of course. That's...nobody will never deny that. But do we really want to get that money out of a storage building? We could sell it to the town. We could try to get a grant to put it something else, and we could get the money, but in a different way. So I beg you to listen to the public and the community, and request to withdraw the sale of this 6.5 acre. Thank you.
I brought a whiteboard and drew on it, because everybody's visual on it would help a little bit. I am not here to talk about what everybody else has been discussing, but I want to pass out a letter to each of you that I sent to Mr. Schaefer from the PSD back at the beginning of March. And the reason that I sent him this letter, essentially to, was a follow-up to an in-person discussion that I had with him.
Thank you.
And that in-person discussion was the result of me calling the PSD. I left over 25 voicemails for Joseph Marsinkas between January and February. I stopped in multiple times. I was confused because I was looking for David Hoffman, and I didn't know that David Hoffman had retired or left the year previously. So my property is 1648 Folly Road. It's the corner of Folly Road and Grimble Extension. And in 2015, and then again in 2017, I met with Mr. Hoffman at the PSD in his office to discuss what is a 320-foot sewer easement that goes across my property, but it stops right in the middle. And he said there was no plans to use it. It was abandoned. At that time, he said, "Whenever you get a formal finalized site plan, bring it to me, and I'm willing to modify the easement." Maybe that means bring the easement back 20 feet. Maybe it means bring it back 100 feet. There was no plans to use it, stopping in the middle of the property. So that was in my mind, and my property has changed. There's been a variety of different plans. At this point in time, I feel confident that I have the best plan that we've ever had after multiple iterations, 2015 to now. I live here, so this is the property that's in focuses on the corner, but we now have three properties, which is about three acres. And my goal is to adhere to all the regulations, which the Folly Road corridor plan wants the buildings by the street, and it wants the parking in the rear. And so doing that, my goal is also to maximize the green space. But after listening to a lot of the people in the community and many different things, my plan for the open green space changed to become a playable green space, which is the first and only mini golf course on James Island. And so to do that, my buildings need to be more of a rectangular shape along Folly Road, and then the parking is in the rear, and then we maximize the green space, and then we do really cool things like utilize a water feature that doubles as a stormwater storage and underground stormwater drainage. And I'm actually in construction, and stormwater is what I focus on. So I have a very good understanding of all the ways to utilize my property that is kind of the opposite of the, you know, storage units in this discussion here tonight. But then it was kind of a heartbreaker when I couldn't get ahold of Joseph Marsinkas. Then I went and had a meeting with Mr. Schaefer, and he pretty much just looked at me like I was crazy. And I thought he was going to be here tonight. I've already discussed this issue with Mr. Latson, and he was very supportive and said, you know, "Come explain the situation, and we'll see what we can do." So we have an easement that stops two-thirds of the way across my property. My property's 460 feet long. This easement stops at 320 feet. There are no plans to use it. It is a 30-foot easement, but the standard setback off of Folly Road is only 15 feet. I only need a 50% reduction. So the way that my building footprint is, again, in order to maximize green space and create this incredible outdoor fun place for everybody on James Island to go, I need to reduce this just by 78 feet and 15 feet. I have...everything is laid out there on the letter. And what I said to Mr. Schaefer is, he just had zero ability to even care or have any interest in working with me or finding a solution. And I said, you know, "You're a member of this community, like the Public Service District. How can we not work together to find a solution here?" I was extremely disappointed in the meeting with him. And I wrote this letter, and it's essentially an opportunity. It's an offer. His point was, "Hey, we may need this sewer easement in the future. We don't know." And I said, "Okay, well, are you aware that the Moultrie property is 10 and 1/2 acres, and there's a development plan for 60 townhomes, and they're going to put in a 1,500 linear-foot, you know, multi-use path?"
Thank you, sir. We did...we've exceeded the three minutes, but we've got the gist of what you're saying. And now, in conjunction of what you're showing us with this letter, we'll be able to get it to Kevin Levon, who is now the wastewater manager of that department, and we will have him get an answer back to you. How's that?
That sounds great. I just wanted to give you 10 seconds here. This is...what I drew here is an opportunity. I'm merely looking to give you a...if this actually needs to be an easement and you need to use it, you can have the rest of my property, 15 feet. It's a setback anyways. If you actually need this easement to go towards Folly Beach, then I'm willing to work with you, and you can have the property there and use it.
Thank you. Let's...thank you.
Let's talk about this.
No, we're not going to have discussion. Thank you.
Well, I think it's important...
And there's no comment towards...
I do...
No, ma'am, there's no comment.
I'm sorry, I need to ask him this because of where we are.
No, ma'am. You can email him.
Are you in the city?
You're out of order, Commissioner Milliken.
City. He is in the city of Charleston.
That's okay.
That's important to get on the record, because this is a multi-jurisdictional...
This is a public comment section. Please, thank you. Thank you so much. Who is our next person, please?
When people take the trouble to come, we need to follow up.
Jackson, thank you so much.
Caroline Parker, with all due respect.
No, um, no, we're talking about the next speaker. Thank you. I know Caroline Parker, too. Thank you.
Well, I'm not Carol Jackson, but she sent me this letter to read. Oh, gosh.
So Ms. Woolsey, you're reading a letter from Carol Jackson?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a Housing Authority meeting this evening, so I'm sad to miss Dave's last night, to give him kudos. Would you please read the following? Oh, gosh. "Thank you, Dave, for all the ways you immediately stepped in and stepped up to take on the big challenge for the PSD and all the James Island stakeholders. You saw the need and modeled the collaboration efforts it has and will take on James Island to put our citizens' interests ahead of territorial responsibilities and duties. Despite your short tenure, your work will stand the test of time, and you will be thanked. Godspeed, Carol Jackson."
Good evening. My name is Wendy Teal. I live at 1290 Hampshire Road. I'm also here tonight to urge the withdrawal of sale of the Marsh Walk and consider Mayor Woolsey...or, excuse me, Mayor Lyons' discussion of purchasing the land. I apologize. This is a nice speaker.
Thank you.
And I've been here before. You know where I stand, and the message is no different. The flooding is real. Green space is difficult to get back. We've got a golden opportunity with the town of James Island, and I really implore you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Hey, good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Kyle Taylor. I'm the managing member of the purchaser and the developer for the Dills Bluff tract property comprised of two parcels. That's 6.52 acres total. That's 5.25 acres of residential, 1.27 acres of commercial property currently under contract. I'm here tonight for a couple of minutes to come before you in person, present myself here in person.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor. Please state your address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, sure. Mainly address, 295 Seven Farms Drive, Suite C 133. Very briefly, I want to talk about a topic that, of course, is interesting for us to take care of, interesting for the community, and that's storm drainage. What I want to do is talk about storm drainage for the next couple of minutes, because there's been a lot of misinformation, and frankly, disinformation about this property. And I can assure you, there's nothing malicious about this development that we're doing.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Taylor, for one moment.
Yes, so I want to go through three...
Excuse me. Chair Clifford, may he have more time? Did he get with...I mean, my feeling is, he should be given the opportunity to give a presentation, and, you know, again, we've lost our district manager. We're in a tough spot right now. Surely, had he contacted you and asked if he could give a five- or 10-minute presentation, you would have said yes? So I wanted to give you more time, Mr. Taylor.
Well, I'm going to give him the same time, because this is the public comment section, and I'll be happy to have him come and speak with us. I'm going to give him the same time that we gave this gentleman over here, where he ran over to five-minute mark.
Okay.
So that way, I think that's the least we can do. So we got a lot of, you know, so that way, that way, you're extended the same courtesy as he was. Is that...is that okay? Thanks.
Sure. And my expectation was only three minutes. And what I've done is I've presented information to you guys in writing to summarize just some verbal points I'm going to communicate here tonight. Of course, we've been working on this property for well over approximately a year, and over the course of that time, we've met many challenges. But storm drainage, from the beginning, has been the main, and of course, there's been many challenges. But storm drainage has been one of the biggest challenges that we want to make sure that we're taking care of. And what I want to do for the next couple of minutes is talk about three main topics of storm drainage that maybe the community's just not aware of, because storm drainage, of course, is not a matter of the PSD. It's a matter of the Town Public Works Review in accordance with Charleston County Stormwater Department, local state government, DEHEC, review stormwater. The PSD does not review stormwater, and the public does not necessarily get public comment to stormwater, because it's a matter of engineering and technical review. But there's three main points that I want to go over that I think would be very important. Point number one, the pond outfall for this development tract is not discharging to the west of White House Boulevard. We are not discharging the stormwater to the west. We're discharging the stormwater to the north. So we're not going this way. We are discharging the primary discharge north, as directly to the marsh as we possibly can. And that was, as you'll see in the documentation that's provided, we communicated with Mr. Mark Johnson very early in the process, as early as July, and initiating, got his blessings as well as Charleston County, on how we were going to start to manage stormwater in the most appropriate way for this property. And as you'll see, there's some due diligence items in that packet that I think will be very interesting in how we've achieved this design. So we are not discharging, according to current plans, they still require approval, and that's where it's a little bit difficult to preemptively talk about these things, because they require approval. But we are discharging our primary outfall north, as directly to the marsh as we possibly can. It cuts the flow path for all the drainage by approximately 25%, right? It's an extreme reduction in the flow path, which is a good thing. You don't want to send stormwater offsite as fast as possible. You would like to send it as directly as possible to the eventual outfall, which in this case is the marsh. So that's point number one. We're not discharging our primary discharge to the west, to White House Boulevard. Point number two, the current site development plans are comprised of five stormwater ponds. The adjacent neighborhood is comprised of zero stormwater ponds, White House Plantation, zero stormwater ponds. This subdivision development, including the commercial, is comprised of five stormwater ponds for 13 proposed lots, 13 lots, five stormwater ponds. We are going above and beyond as well as we can to exceed the stormwater requirements in Charleston County and the town of James Island, which frankly are above and beyond really any other requirements. I've done development for many years. Really, these requirements are above and beyond, and we are meeting and exceeding those requirements and providing five stormwater ponds for water quality and quantity management. That's point number two. Point number three that I just want to touch on, at my sole cost, as you'll see in the last page, I have gone and cleaned a critical outfall along Valley Forge Drive, which was done...we were working on it for a while to get out there. I had to fire one group, but that was done last week, late last week, as a matter of fact. We have cleaned an outfall. There's before and after photos. And the quiet secret, in my humble opinion, is that many drainage issues are the result of deferred maintenance. I mean, frankly, if you cut your grass wrong in some areas, you can end up plugging up a culvert underneath your driveway. You really have to be aware of drainage and the maintenance. And that is frankly a responsibility of DOT, of the town in certain areas, maybe of the city. It's a public responsibility to maintain drainage. And in my humble opinion, maintenance, if we could tackle that, I mean, you really can help, you may not solve all the issues, but you can really help improve some of the issues. And so at my sole cost, we have gone ahead and cleaned an outfall. As you see, I think those photos are very great documentation, which was conducted last week. So, point being, I want to present myself to the commission, to the public, and talk about this main critical item of design, which of course is a technical engineering matter. It's frankly not a public matter in the sense that individuals that may not be engineers or have relevance and experience in site design and storm drainage analysis, um, they can certainly weigh in. We appreciate their comments. But it requires licensed engineers to review these matters and make decisions on these matters. And we have done everything that we possibly believe that we can. Um, and we're certainly still open to improvement. But we were at the finish line. We're very close to the finish line recently. Actually, the Public Works Director, as far as I understand it, the town was let go. Um, so we're working through that matter. So the Public Works Director at the town was recently let go. But we're working through that, trying to get final approvals. And we appreciate any and all support from the public. And I come here asking for the public to please consider this new information and publicly support this project. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think she's in that question.
Nobody.
I, I don't know.
Are there any other speakers signed?
Philip Lipden.
Hello? First, I'd like to thank all of you for your service, for what you do for us, James Island residents. Um, I was born and raised in West Ashley. So I always dreamed of raising kids on James Island, and now I'm doing that. So that's pretty cool. Speakers going in and out.
Address, please.
1309 Fort Johnson Road. I think it's better here.
There you go.
So I have two kids. I have a four-month-old and a three-year-old. And, um, three times in the past year have been exposed to sewage. Not directly, fortunately, but I could see it getting there. So this past rain that we had, uh, our bathtubs were filling up with sewer water. Our toilets were gurgling. And, uh, it, it was going on for hours. And in, in my opinion, it was not that bad of a storm. We've had a lot worse storms. Uh, last hurricane season, it happened twice. But this past rain, in my opinion, was a little worse than like a, a big storm. So I'm, I'm pretty nervous that this coming hurricane season, we're going to be seeing some major sewage problems on Fort Johnson Road. I know, uh, one lady had, uh, like disaster care that she was paying for, uh, at the end of my street. So that's the, so that's the problem. That's why I'm here. And this is what I've seen as a response. So I've seen, uh, you guys, well, not you, you know, your workers, uh, come out and install what they call pop tops for the, I guess, the sewer lines. And they, and they're saying that these are going to mediate the problem. So what does that mean? A pop top means that when the water gets high enough, the sewage is going to come into the street instead of going into people's houses. So that's a Band-Aid. We, I mean, that, you got to do what you got to do. And I think they're doing that for now, um, as kind of a Band-Aid to get us by. But what's the solution? So we need to know what's the solution. We're, we're willing to be patient, you know? But at the same time, if you have sewage coming into your house, how patient can you be? I'd like to know, I, so then the other thing, I'd like to know what's going on at Plum Island? Because I know all the sewage is going there. And are they expanding it? Or like, how are they dealing with it? Because I, I know you guys work hand in hand with them. So I guess if you could get some information from Plum Island, how are they expanding and are they expanding? And if not, how are you guys going to deal with all this new development? I mean, it's, it's, the sewage is going to go, like, it's already maxed out. So, yeah, so, one, I don't like the, the pop top thing because I don't like sewage in the street, but I get that you have to do that. And two, uh, what's the bigger plan? So it's clear that there needs to be a, maybe a, like a bigger pipe. Uh, I'm not an engineer, but there should be some sort of plan in the works. So, yeah. So if you could reach out, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan Dean?
I tend to speak pretty loud. Can everybody hear me? So I didn't come nearly as prepared as I was last time. But, um, my name is Megan Dean. I live at 1243 Cornwallis Road. It's very unfortunate that the developer left. I think it speaks volumes to how much he cares about what the community thinks. But I am here to oppose the development at Dills Bluff. I am happy to see that it's back on your all's agenda. Thank you for that. Although I really wish it wasn't hidden behind the executive session. There are so many better uses for this land. I beg you all to consider giving this property back to the town as urged by Mayor Lyons. Thank you so much for everything you're doing to support the constituents and what we're hoping for. At a minimum, I beg the developer not to put a storage unit. I think that we can all be adults here and we can find some compromises. And I'm hoping that he recognizes that that does feel like retaliation to us that are fighting to preserve this character of the island, pushing for green space and wanting a place for my kids to be able to explore. One of the best parts about the neighborhood is the wildlife that we have. Every morning when I walk my dog at 5:30, there's a pair of owls that I admire as I'm walking before the sun comes up and taking away these trees. There is no greater control to stormwater planning than natural habitat. Also, I live on the backside of the wa, of the neighborhood. I know I mentioned last time I spoke that the last unnamed storm we had, the water was thigh-high on my husband. I'm 5'9", he's 6'. I genuinely believe it. I'm not being dramatic. It would sweep my four-year-old away. I teach my children to swim because of the amount of flooding in front of my home. We just recently put a development on our, or a renovation on the back of my home. The amount of drama that I had to go through to get that on my house was incredible. But I encourage anybody to come stand in my backyard and look at where the new national flood line is. It will make you want to vomit. It is this high from the ground up of where we had to put our electrical outlets to make it the new flood compliance. I do worry about this development. I worry about James Island. I worry about not having enough green space. We do not need development and we surely do not need a storage unit. This property right now is going to benefit 13 families. And it could benefit the entire island. And so I really hope that you all look at alternatives. At a minimum, I would like to propose at least letting the town buy the commercial property so that we can have a park on at least an acre of it. And I definitely think that the stormwater planning, that him directing it to the marsh, come to my house. Again, I live at 1243 Cornwallis Road. It's not going to help me because the marsh already can't handle the flooding. So, thank you.
Chris Gellman?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I just wrote it to check in.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you all, thank you all for all of your public comments.
Madam Chair, may, may I ask you something, please? Um, is there any way the district can get with Mr. Wilson and organize a meeting with the county, with CWS, and with city reps and PSD reps to discuss his issues?
Well, all that's going to be addressed by our staff. So that's why we, we don't go into what we're going to do here. We have to take in all the elements and especially what the Public Service District does. And so maybe some, with some redirection, and we can do it too with the email. But we're not going to do it right now. So thank you. Number four is the consent agenda, regular meeting from February 26, 2024.
Sub-move.
You move to approve second? Any discussion?
Move seconded.
Ms. Woolsey, or Commissioner Woolsey? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Number five, resolution number 24-03, authorizing the commission to appoint Tamara Robinson as acting district manager.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Um, can we vote on adding a personnel matter, um, to executive session to discuss the update on the district manager's position as well as the wastewater director?
I think that has to be done by...
You can make a motion as to have a two-thirds of the vote.
Two-thirds of the vote.
May I add something to that? I actually have questions about this agenda item that we're on right now for executive session because it's a personnel matter. I have some questions about the way the resolution's drafted. May we discuss this resolution in executive session as well? And come back to that after executive session? And I guess that would be a two-thirds vote, too.
So then that's, you want it to be encompassed with the...
Whatever Brenda has, I guess.
Personnel, yeah, the personnel matter to get an update on the district manager's position as well as the wastewater director position.
Okay.
I'll second that if it's a motion.
Okay, so are you seconding her motion or the one that she's dovetailing off of?
I think, I think we're talking two different things.
Two different.
We are.
Yes.
I'm going to second her motion.
Okay.
So for the record, Joanne, do you have that? The first motion is Ms. Grant's motion to add the two items to executive session. We need to vote on that first.
Correct.
Mr. Cantrell seconded that. Okay.
Roll call vote, please, if there's any, no discussion?
What are we doing? Uh, explain what you're doing again.
Okay, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Grant has made a motion to be updated on, is it the status or the search? Because aren't you on the search committee?
No, I'm not on it, no, I'm not.
Okay. Have you been in contact with the search committee or anybody?
No, we, I just think we need to know. And we can't just publicly say what's going on because there's people, personal information who maybe have applied that could be employed with others. We just need an update as a commission as a whole on what's the status for the district manager's position as well as the wastewater director.
Okay, well, if, and on our website, there is instructions on how to submit the application processes. So we are not even, and that's as far as I know, is that we are currently receiving applications. I don't think we need an executive session to say whether or not we're getting, we're getting, um, applications.
Um, I, I would actually go even further than that and request that on every executive session, agenda, until we enter into a contract...
Hold on, wait, no, stop, stop, stop. No, she has a motion. I'm going to deal with this right now. Please do not try to dovetail off of her motion, okay? So there's a motion on the floor and it's, it's up for discussion. So I know that we have a search team. I know that we are hiring a search team too, um, to help find and fill the district manager position. As you know, it's a very detailed and very job-specific force. So, other than collecting data, that's all that I know that is happening. Anybody on the committee? Let's see, Mr. Latson, is there anything you'd like to add to that? Since you're on the search committee?
No, the only thing that I like to, in support of what Brenda's, uh, question is, at least, uh, we can discuss it to get updates so that the panel would know, everyone could know where we stand.
Okay, that sounds good. Fine, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Pass.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Um, yes, go ahead.
Motion carries unanimously.
My addition to executive session was to discuss the resolution appointing Tamara to be acting district manager. I have some questions about that for legal and for the commission. And I also wanted to suggest an amendment. And I, and I feel like this is a personnel matter and it should be done in executive session. And there's no reason why we can't have a quick discussion about this in executive session and come out of executive session and deal with this.
Is your motion to add to executive session and move agenda number five down after executive session?
Yes, sir. I second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving to number six, authorize a district manager to fully execute Engineering Task Order 24-01 for James Island Public Service District Phase Six Wastewater Collection Rehab Project up to $83,500.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven, authorize the district manager to fully execute Financial Letter of Commitment for Solid Waste Automated Side Loader that we had in-depth discussion on at our last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll, um, or any discussion or roll, nope.
No, no.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Latson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
February District Management Report, presented by Tamara Robinson, Assistant District Manager.
Um, so everybody received their packets. If you have any information on the financial information that was presented, please feel free to ask it. Um, if there's something there that we can't answer, we also have our Director of Finance if you have any questions on that. We, I also wanted to report that our second phase of our server installation will now take place April 4th and April 5th. Originally, we had planned to purchase, um, more equipment in the upcoming budget year and the fiscal year, 25-year. But we found a solution to be able to use something that we can afford in this budget year. So we're going to go ahead and complete that server install next month. And as far as the positions openings, we have several position openings on our website. So, uh, share the news, spread the information. so, uh, share the news, spread the information, um, we're looking to fill them with some qualified talent, and right now, we have the wastewater director position opening and the district manager position opening. We recently closed the executive assistant position opening, and we have other skilled trade workers on there also, so, lots of openings available on our site right now. And that is it for the report, unless someone else has a question, go ahead.
I'm either for you or for Ed. I know that we have a very large debt payment due soon of $700,000 or $800,000 on Fire Station 1. Do we have the funds to make that debt payment? Do you know when that's due?
Uh, not off the top of my head.
Okay, it's like, spring, right, April?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just, we've been watching that. Okay, but we're good on that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
There are no committee and JIPSD representative reports, I do not see any correspondence or newspaper articles listed, and the second batch of the oral and written petitions are three minutes per speaker, please sign in, and if there's another sheet over there?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not signed in for the second half? We have, um, John Peters, Joanne has it already.
I think there was only one sheet.
Yeah, yes. My name's John Peters, 1301 Hampshire Road. In regards to the six and a half acres you have under contract with KT Properties, I encourage you, um, I respectfully ask for you to withdraw from the contract. James Island is growing significantly at a fast rate, and, um, it's gonna be a place we all don't wanna be anymore, if we overbuild on it. Let's preserve it, let's keep what we have, what little we have that's not developed, and, and save it. I, I can't say anything more, you, you've heard, you've heard me those last year, but I appreciate you, what you're doing for us, and your team of professionals, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that moves us to, I'm gonna make a motion for executive session to receive legal advice associated with the following. Receipt of legal advice concerning Dills Bluff Properties, consideration of extension requests by KT Properties, as well as the two motions that were granted earlier, as far as the status of our district manager and wastewater district search, and, I think, and, um, and, um, Ms. Robinson assuming the role as, as district manager, acting district manager until all that is resolved, I make a motion, do I have a second?
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Latson?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, I'm gonna give two minutes before we start that, for anybody who needs to take care of any, uh, personal business, let's just put it that way.
Yes, we both did together.
I also want to thank all y'all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now resuming the regular commission meeting for Monday, March 25th. We have exited executive session, um, and discussed the matters that were, that were put on there, and that have been written on here. I'm going back to number five, um, resolution number 24-03, authorizing the commission to appoint Tamara Robinson as acting district manager. I make the motion that we appoint Tamara Robinson as the acting district manager.
Second, everybody second.
Second by Brenda, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Latson?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Going to item 13, consideration of 90-day extension without monetary consideration requested by KT Properties for tax map sheet numbers 425-12-00-298, and tax map sheet number 425-12-00-185. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion.
And what is your, what's your motion?
My motion is that, um, we, um, his, um, he asked for an extension, um, I'm willing to give him an extension, as long as he is paying for it, not a free extension.
But that's, that's not the mo, that's not the, that's not the item on the, on the agenda, he, there is no, so the, the consideration of extension request by KT Properties for 90 days without any monetary deposits or anything, that is, um, the consideration of an extension for the request of that, for these two tax map sheets. So do I have any motions on the floor? Nobody's gonna make a motion?
Well, I was about to make one, but I want him to put some money with it.
But that's not the item...
Well, no, my answer is no.
I make a motion to vote on, um...
You're right.
13.
Okay, so Brenda Grant's making a motion to vote on the consideration of extension request by KT Properties for tax map sheets that are previously...
Motion to approve or deny, I'm sorry.
Um, well, it's for consideration, so we're gonna either vote yes or no on it.
To consider.
So it's a... It's a consideration, so...